P. Three, and we'll start with a pledge of allegiance. Everybody stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do a motion to set the chair.
I would make a motion to ask Mr. Mayberry to be chair. I'll second that.
Motion's made in seconds. We'll appoint Mayberry as chair. I'll do roll call. Sayers?
Aye.
Mayberry?
Yes.
Yeah.
Bonnie, it's now your meeting.
Thank you. You can go on Amber if you want to.
Oh, you've almost got two minutes.
She had a fifteen minute speech, by the way.
Yeah.
She does not pull that out. I would entertain a motion to select the vice chair. Hearing that, I would make the motion to you select Mr. Sayers as vice chair.
Uh, I don't support that motion.
Got a motion in a second to approve Mr. Sayers as vice chair. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Next thing on the agenda is to approve our agenda. For the reorganization meeting, I apologize.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for the board supervisors reorganization meeting.
The only request I have is number eleven is to put it, they have it down as a resolution. There's no resolution for that.
Good. Any other discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Number six, set the Mills County Board Supervisors regularly scheduled meetings. They're listed and attached. I think you're only part of members, I think.
No.
So every Tuesday at the side. Is that an entrance day?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that the regular board supervision meeting is every Tuesday at eight fifteen a.m. With the stipulation of the first six months having an evening meeting every month. The first Tuesday of every month having it at six o'clock at the annex building on Tuesdays.
First meeting every month at six in the annex.
Yeah?
Yep.
I'll second that. Wait, maybe, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr..
No, it's us.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Um, this has been talked over with other department heads and stuff that will have to be there, Mr. Sayers.
Yep, I've already talked to the, uh, well, I've talked to the others office. I've talked to Jolene. What it costs the taxpayers that much, we can make sure that a department head has to come in. And that if they are able to collect over time, that they come in on a regular Tuesday morning meeting. This makes sure that those who have a job cannot come here every Tuesday morning. That those who cannot have a babysitter, they're able to comment, voice their concerns and get on the agenda.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number seven, designating county newspapers.
I'd make a motion to approve the Blended Opinion Tribune and the Melbourne Leader Beacon as the official newspapers for the year twenty twenty five.
I'll second that. We have a motion in a second to approve the county designated newspapers and the Opinion Tribune and the Melbourne Leader Beacon. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to approve the paid holidays. They are attached.
I would make a motion to approve the paid holidays. I'm read off or you just want to go off the list?
I'll take that.
New Year's Day, President's Day is February seventeenth. Memorial Day is February sixth. Independence Day, July fourth. Labor Day, September first. Veterans Day, September eleventh. Thanksgiving Day is the twenty seventh and Friday, the twenty eighth. It's known as a floating holiday and then goes through Christmas, Wednesday, the twenty fourth, Thursday, the twenty fifth. And of course, New Year's Day is next year, January one of twenty twenty six.
I'll second that. We have a motion in a second to approve the county paid, county paid holidays. Is there any other discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval of supervisors committees assignments for twenty twenty five. They are... Just doing here. First. Start with A, Amber. Is that our first one?
Yeah.
Okay. Order of health. I would make the motion to approve Mr. Sayers as the order of health. Uh, committee?
Uh, who do you want for alternate?
Ben Crouch is alternate.
Okay.
Second that.
Uh, number one, each one individually or you want to wait till we're all done?
I really don't care. Let's wait till we're done.
It's still right with me.
Good with me. We'll just work our way through them. Uh, next one is district productions.
That's mine.
Jack going to be alternate?
I will.
Okay. Emergency management.
That's another one of mine.
Fine, you're the alternate. I can deal with that. Los Hills of Lions, that one's mine. And the authority board is, unless someone else wants it.
And then who do you use for alternate? Alternate on?
You know what? I think Carol was the alternate before, Richard. I think.
Yeah, I'll take him. I'll take the Mills County Conservation Board as discussed with Bonnie already.
I would be the alternate if that's all right, Richard?
Yep. You can sit there.
Henry Canyons, that was mine too, and Los Hills. He wants to be an alternate. I can. E nine one one.
And that's one of mine.
Can't be alternate, Bonnie?
Sure.
You're gonna be that guy?
I don't.
Bonnie?
I will. Those kind of terrorism, I'll take that one. I take an option with on that. Unless you want it, Richard?
Nope.
Golden Hills R C and D. Jack?
Yep.
Richard, you want to be, uh, alternate?
I'll give it a shot.
Let's see. Map of board of directors, I'd like mine to have that.
Alternate?
Crouch. That's okay.
Map of council officials.
That one's also on Mayberry.
Richard going to be the alternate?
Yep.
Map of RFA policy. What is RFA? Is that true?
Regional, regional finance authority for roads, bridges and things that the county engineers do in Harrison, Fox, Mills.
I always thought it was RPA. Is it RFA?
It's RFA.
Okay, okay. Mayberry you want?
That's mine.
Yeah, I just.
Yep. Jack, you want to be alternate on that?
Go for it. Have the finance committee, I would have that if possible.
Well, that was one of what she took care of.
That's Carol.
Yeah, because I think they need in joint ventures up there.
I would take that if that's all right. Crouch, you want alternate?
Yeah.
ESA.
I took that one from Bonnie.
That was Richard.
Yeah.
Jack, would you like to be the alternate?
Uh, sure.
Southwest Iowa Area Regional Mental Health Board. That's yours, Rick.
Yep. You want to alternate that or?
Go for it. Jack, you want that?
He's on it. Do you want to give it up?
Richard usually makes the meetings, so I'll take it. Southwest Iowa Juvenile Detention, that's mine that I'm on currently now. I'm chairman. If that's all right, I'd like to keep it.
I'll take alternate if you want to on that one.
Or judicial, that one's also one that I am chairman on. It's more of a liaison anymore, but it's.
Jack, can I be on one of them?
Yep, I could be alternate. Now... I'd like to be the member for Schutko and happy to be the alternate, Richard.
I would like it. The way, the way around, I've, you know, I've been on that board for twenty some years. I took three, four years of some bad times. I was president, chairman, whatever you want to call it. Got them started back on their feet, you know?
Could he, could the alternate still go to?
Well, yeah, he can still look at me. Yeah.
I'm probably the alternate there.
Force of development, that one is mine currently, but the state runs that, so we meet once a year, maybe?
Yeah.
It's not much. I would be wanting to stay there unless someone else wants it. Richard or Jack, which one you want to be alternate? Veterans Affairs.
Uh, I thought we were going to leave that one till next.
No, that's, uh, that's actually a look forward memory.
Hopefully it's supply. I, I would stay on that. Being I'm veteran on the board.
Jack, would you like alternate or I would take it either way?
I'll take alternate. I'll take West Central.
I would take alternate on that. Unless you want it, Richard?
Nope.
Okay.
And Jack, would you like to have the library foundation, they need on a meeting on a night that I very seldom can make a meeting. Trouble making that meeting. And they might meet four times a year.
Yeah, I'll be on it if you're alternate.
Okay. I'll share it with you.
Boost for families?
I got Crouch, an alternate, Mayberry.
And then?
It was a vending committee.
Right. And if you want to do it, find me, I don't care.
Find, you know what they do? Yeah, the basically what it says, they help families in need, so. I'll go with that.
Mayberry? Yeah. You alternate that?
Yep.
Next one would be safety committee, and we are all on the safety committee.
Uh, county economic development, who was on it last?
Me and then Richard.
Uh, so how do you want to?
Or no, economic development, we all rotate.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 we're all.
We just need to know who's going to come in the next time.
It's, they've already got a schedule.
Well, they do.
Yep, yep, yep. We'll just make sure that they're aware of that, so.
Yep.
We're all on that. That way we're rotating. We both can't be there. There's some confidential stuff they talk about, so.
And it's the same with courthouse security, right?
Court house security.
Yes. Helping Mills County Commotion.
I'd like Crouch to take that. And I can be alternate.
Good luck, Richard?
Fine.
Joint land use with Offutt.
I was going to ask Jack to take that. I've been on it for four years and have never met yet. But we have to have it on account of Offutt sitting across the river in case they want to do something. We have to be in on the discussion and approval.
Yeah, I can be on that. Crouch, you want to be alternate?
Yeah.
Heartland twenty fifty, that's one that I have been on. They haven't met for four years now, but, uh, they may sign that back up.
Put Mayberry in.
Crouch, you can alternate.
Not even sounding, that's, that one's mine.
I'd like to take alternate.
Mayberry and Sayers?
Board of Adjustment.
I'd like to see Jack on that. I'll take alternate if that's all right with Jack.
Yep. I'm good with that.
And I'm okay with being on City of London Board of Adjustment.
Okay. Crouch, you want to be alternate on that or?
Yeah.
You don't want to make me take it.
And finding and joining with the city, I've been on that, so I'll keep it. You want alternate, Bonnie, or just?
Sure. East west, this is about in the river. We said this one was kind of defunct.
Yeah.
In a sense, for now. There's, there's money that came through and we did a few projects on it.
Yeah, and we're still waiting.
Yeah.
Still waiting on the state to pass money around and it stops about, oh, over around part, mid part of southwest Iowa, uh, southern Iowa. So.
Keep that, Richard?
I wouldn't mind taking it as we have land on the bottom.
That's fine. Richard going to be alternate?
Yeah.
West County Trails, that is one that I am on.
Mayberry. I'd like to be alternate.
Jack?
Landfill Association, you pretty much live in the landfill, Richard, so.
Yeah.
You can have that one.
We had the previous fire the other night. I heard that scanner was, uh, and they got back there and nobody had a key.
I'd like to be alternate, Mr. Jack.
Glen Haven Board. Richard, have you told Bonnie what you told me yet?
No. Miss, uh, Mayberry called me the other day and I don't know what, there's two Ron's on the board. One of them is stepping down and he asked that I replace him on the board.
On the Glen Haven board?
On the Glen Haven board. It'll just be the liaison for the board.
For you? Okay.
We need an alternate. I'll take that.
Jack? Alice.
Alice, Richard.
Same with that, it's better, Richard, to undertake alternate. Sure. MM, I think we're all the way through, aren't we?
Are there any new ones we need to add?
I am not aware of any at this time.
What about the GRC if they leave that way idle?
Yeah, probably.
Okay. Um.
Every one I'd like to rotate to. That would
Okay.
We need to be involved in that.
Great. Paulus. I'll make a motion to approve the list of board appointees to various boards and committees.
I'll second. We have a motion in a second to approve the committee assignments. Is there any discussion regarding this? Hearing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Resilience twenty five oh one, naming depositories for the year twenty twenty five.
We just want to get more of that.
Yeah, we probably should. Let's get the treasurer here. Just in case we have any questions. These are maximum amounts listed. This is not what we have in there. I really wish we did, but close. Close on some anyway.
And we do try to keep all of our depositories in local banks here. We do have some in IPAT, uh, but they do pay better than locally, so, but we don't. We have been bitten twice by putting money out of state. And some of it we got back and some of it we never saw again, so that's been many years ago, so. This previous board, this board has always said, you know, what they have here, London, Melbourne, Emerson, Kaver. That's where we put our money for local investments.
They're all here to see you.
I know.
Resilience twenty five oh one, naming the depositories for the year twenty twenty five. Does anybody have any questions for the treasurer? Anything you would like to add? Nothing?
I'd make a motion to approve depositories for the year twenty twenty five, right?
Yes, sir. I'll second that. Naming the list we have supplied.
Depositors for the year twenty twenty four. No, you know, it's right on that, they're wrong here. Okay. Second.
We have a motion in a second naming the depositories for Mills County. That would be Glendale State Bank, First National Bank, Melbourne Bank, Hopton Bank, out of Melbourne, St. and Glendale State Bank, Kaver, First Interstate Bank in Glenwood, and IP out of Des Moines. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, roll call since it's a resolution.
Sayers?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Mayberry?
Yes. Motion carries three here. Thank you.
I'll get your side talking.
Yeah. Do you have the original? You're supposed to say one of these or?
No, I have the original.
Okay.
Yeah. L, L, O, Y.
Right, different line. B and Y, that's me.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Everyone becoming positive is already got.
I know, I've already got it. Yes. Okay. Number eleven on the agenda, payment of fixed charges per section code three thirty one point five oh six, authorizing the auditor to issue checks when the board is not in session, including freight, expats, postage, gas, water, lights, telephone, court reporting, claims with due dates to be paid before an upcoming accounts payable date.
I would make a motion to approve first section three thirty one point five oh six allows a auditor to pay bills when we're not or can't be here to sign off and that she has dates to meet, payment dates to meet.
I'll second that. We have a motion in a second to approve payment fixed charges per Iowa code three thirty one point five oh six. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Approving mileage reimbursement rate for Mills County employees. Currently we are at, what, Amber, did you say sixty four?
Sixty three.
Sixty three? And the federal is seventy?
Yeah, it's seventy.
Okay. Or would you like to be examined?
I would make a motion to approve seventy cents.
Last year, what was the level?
Sixty seven.
Sixty seven. I mean, we, we stayed at sixty four, I think sixty four, sixty five, so we've been below it. Not quite sure about seventy cents, but maybe sixty seven, sixty eight, bump it up, but seventy cents kind of seems like a large chunk of money to me. I mean, that's up.
I would go most of the time, so. I'll strike my motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to set the, uh, let's see, make sure I get it right. Pile for reimbursement rate for sixty seven cents.
Okay. I'll second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the mileage reimbursement rate of sixty seven cents per mile. Is there any discussion regarding that? Hearing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thirteen is accounts payable. You can set the dates for it, Amber, or, or?
Yeah, yeah.
We just have none?
Yes, we're setting the dates for accounts payable. And that list is attached.
Do you want a motion on that or are you just?
Yeah, it's just to set the dates for accounts payable.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we the dates for accounts payable will be authorized by the auditor's office.
I'll second that. Per the attached.
Right.
We have a motion in a second to set the account payable dates per the attached list from the auditor. Is there any discussion regarding this? Hearing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Yes, by the way, I'm sorry. Uh, requirement of county officials to obtain prior approval before purchasing furniture, fixtures or equipment that exceeds five hundred dollars. That means they have to come to us and prove it to them five hundred bucks.
I'll make a motion so that county officials are required to obtain prior approval before purchasing furniture, fixtures or equipment that exceeds five hundred dollars.
I'll second that. We have a motion in a second to approve the reapproval, board approval before purchasing fi- furniture, fixtures or equipment that exceeds five hundred. Is there any discussion regarding that? Hearing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Authorize the chairman to approve emergency expenses.
I'll make a motion to authorize the chair to sign for the emergency expenses on request of the auditor when the board is not in session.
I'll second that. We have a motion in a second to authorize the chairman of the board to approve emergency expenses. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Designate medical examiner and deputy medical examiner.
Hey, Dr. Bear, I talked to him the other day. He is more than happy with the situation that he has with the four assistants. It's, uh, there's one that's an EMT in Melbourne and we have, uh, one EMT in Glenwood plus two firemen that, uh, can do medical examiner work except if it's a suspicious death. That's the way it's stated.
And that's all for Dr. Bear?
That's all for Dr. Bear, and if anyone is interested or you know someone wants to do this. in contact with me or the chair. Because it sure makes things a lot easier if someone's on scene, uh, you know. Want that in the form of a motion, we leave Dr. Bear as medical examiner.
Yep, yep.
Second that.
We have a motion and a second to designate Dr. Bear as our medical examiner and the four current deputy medical examiners. Is there any discussion regarding that? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Approve people of Mills County residents who are eligible to serve as members of the Mills County condemnation commission.
Said that one's been here, Amber.
Yep. I believe it's from the back.
Yeah.
No one has reached out to me telling me they don't want to be on this either.
Only one's Lee.
Lee is the only one that's mentioned. You know, he will do it, but he says it's just tough for me to get around it. Because if I had to get out and inspect something or get out in the grass, weeds, things, he says. He's just not able to do that.
So I don't know if anything else. We don't, yeah, but we can approve it without even then. Someone later.
We've done that before.
Yes.
They're removing Lee English?
Like that in a form of a motion.
Uh, I would make a motion to approve two or five members right now to the condemnation.
All of them.
All of this?
Yep, and you're just removing Lee.
Anyone have any problems with owners of, operators of ag property? Are we doing this whole page here then?
It's a whole set.
Make sure everybody still lives here. Haven't passed away. I think it's Lee is, uh, the only one. I will make the motion to appoint Mills County residents who are eligible to serve as members of the Mills County condemnation commission.
With, without English or?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the list of residents who are eligible to serve as members of the Mills County condemnation commission. Moving Mr. Deacles from the list. Is there any discussion regarding that? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries three, nothing. County eminent domain compensation commission.
I don't have a list for this one.
At all? We did it on Tuesday.
We can move it to Tuesday.
That's fine. Table that went through Tuesday. Yes, there's a list somewhere, Amber. I know I've seen where it is. I'm not sure. I can dig this on my records. Any open discussion?
Uh. Notes here. Do you want to discuss any, any of the lists of things you should look at, keep in mind, or trying to accomplish? Put that in the next call. Some things I think we need to look at is having our own P and C. P and Z people do a lot of work. Right now, we're in contact with Hop County. Uh, another thing we should be really looking at is pushing for rural water. It would really cheapen a lot of insurance bills and things for people in the outlying communities of Glenwood.
Absolutely.
Uh, I'm pretty sure we're pretty well done with cabling except for in Glenwood.
Yes, all of Mills County, all of the contracts have been fulfilled. One through Glenwood is being built as we speak, so it's an ongoing project. All of the unincorporated areas are served or have the ability to be served.
And we have some needs to be finished, uh, on chapter twenty-four of our policies and things that we've been working at for the past year. We keep a pretty watchful eye on investments. It's a county trader comes in and tells us about sometimes weekly. So, uh, I think that pretty well covers what. That's all I got.
And nothing other than welcome, Jack. Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you, Jack.
Looking forward to working with you.
Do you have anything to add, sir?
Not as of right now.
I'm going to enter a motion to adjourn before Kraut starts throwing papers at me.
I would make a motion that we adjourn at, I'm going to call it nine thirty.
Okay.
Second that.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn at nine thirty. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you. How are you?
I'm doing well. Coming in out of the snowstorm?
Yes.
A little bit more snow up north.
Can shovel your way in?
Okay, we will call the meeting to order at nine twenty-five. We'll call it nine thirty, so we adjourned at nine thirty. And we will start off with the leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jack, Jake, you gave them that obviously.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda in the minutes from December twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, and our meeting on December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. Uh, we have two liquor licenses.
One for the Splinter Golf Corp, and the other one for Bodega Victoria Winery.
Yeah, I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda, the minutes from December twenty-third, December twenty-seventh, and the two liquor licenses for Bodega and Golf Corp. Is there any discussion?
I will abstain from this vote this time because, uh, I'm fine with residents drinking, but since I cannot drink, I do not want to myself approve liquor licenses. So I will abstain from this vote. Uh, moving forward, I'd like to see the agenda in minutes. Be one thing, and then liquor licenses be separate.
So I will second his motion. Okay.
Good.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone abstain?
Aye.
Motion carries. Open comment. Ted.
Thanks. Just a few minutes here. Relax. Go ahead.
Well, I prayed along with these at three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Should make that one.
Yep, good.
First of all, congratulations, Jack. Uh, happy you're here. Uh, last meeting, there were some things bandied about about the Green Hills Association. I don't know all the details, but I do know that that's false information was put out. So that, that should not happen. On this board, when, when things are talked about, please come to it with facts, not conjecture, and certainly not opinions. Uh, I think we all, we all need that. Everybody in this county deserves that. Um, I'd most like to say, Jack is eighteen. He's going to face some resistance out there in this state, uh, amongst people that are just going to judge him based on his age. We need the two of you to help defend him and this county. We voted for him. Okay, we voted for all three, right? But you two, please help protect him a little bit. Yes, he's eighteen. Nobody should be treating him differently because he's eighteen. That is not acceptable. Okay? Uh, Jack, I want a book for you. Some light reading. Okay? Uh, good luck. We should best of luck.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Congratulations, Jack. And I did vote for all three of you at different times, and I'm glad you're all three on the board. Having experienced age discrimination the other way, I think we have to look at it for the person and not the age. It's just like all the other things that are discriminated against. And as you two age, you will see that there's age discrimination on the other side too. Keep working together, as I saw you work in the previous meeting that you just held. Keep working together. It's the best for our county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to say that, um, the voices of people needs to be heard. And so if we nominated you into office, they usually care about what the others say. So if that's not your position, then someone else should be able to say this. Jack is eighteen, but the people spoke. So all three of you should care about what the people want. Come on by your, um, individual opinion. You work for us.
Thank you.
Can I get your name real quick? Sorry, I know. I just did one of the, Dana Horner. I know, I just couldn't place it. Thank you.
We're past the sign-in sheet around two. If you guys could all sign those. I mean, we've lost everybody that was here. Thank you.
What do you need besides me?
Just your name.
Just me?
Social Security.
Bank account.
Yeah, right, right. Anybody else? Thank you. Uh, board supervisor committee updates. Mr. Kraut, you're listed first.
I see that. All I can say is that I had a very merry Christmas with my family. And my wife and I always have a bowl of chili for New Year's Eve.
I had no meetings last week, but they did. We'll agree with Mr. Kraut. I did the same thing. We had, uh, some family here. Didn't have chili. We had, uh, what'd she make? What'd my boys do? They left. She made some bean soup, so I think it was black eyed peas. She said it was New Year's thing, so.
I have nothing worth reporting. I, of course, did not have any, uh, committee or meeting updates. That's a good question. I will say I had a friend come down from the legislature. She spent the last whole semester in Hungary. Um, she came down and, uh, she's from Collins near Ames, and of course, it's, uh, flat earth up there, but come down here and, uh, she really enjoyed the hike that Desa Montgomery led at the archaeological preserve. So we went on that. That would have been yesterday. Um, so I think our conservation's in good shape, and I mean, we probably had thirty attendees. It was a, it was a really good hike.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Pharoah, Mills County engineer, you are up.
All right. First thing you. Rare occurrence, um, to accept us getting more money instead of approval to spend money. This is for a project that we're doing in-house design, hopefully in-house construction. We had a failed culvert, uh, six foot diameter that, uh, was out on Dobney Road, Dobney Avenue. And we were looking to put in a drop inlet structure so water drops down, a riser, and then carries the water under the road. Uh, doing so slows down velocity for erosion, uh, protection. We estimated if we hired out for a contractor, a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. It's going to be much less than that length of cost estimate. We're all crewed doing it. Uh, but Hungary Canyon's alliance has awarded us a maximum of forty thousand dollars, um, for the construction of this property. So this is the agreement, um, that the chair signed, and then the chair of Hungary Canyon's board will then also sign it. It's reimbursement, so once we construct the project, we'll just submit them for reimbursement and send us a check.
Would you like to approve that?
I'd make a motion that we approve Hungary Canyon's dollars, forty thousand dollars for helping us out on our road project in that area and things, uh, on three hundred and fortyth street. On Dobney Avenue, not Dobney.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hungary Canyon's is a great program for us.
They're with them.
Yep, yep, that's part of the local management. They, uh.
Come on the, uh, executive committee and the board. Just in the last year and a half, we got twenty-two thousand dollars, I think, for four hundred street ridges, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars awarded for three hundred and sixty straight culvert, a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So I think our dues to them is around five thousand a year. A year, and we've received that much in the last year and a half.
We've also, we've also used this company, uh, Hungary Canyon, for, as long as I've been on the board, we have, we put in, the first four years I was here, we put in six projects down in the west hill, right street south of Glenn. We did a lot of boring and things back then.
Great projects.
People, people didn't, couldn't believe what we did, but we did it to keep the hills from silting away.
Idea of the island is that the west soil is very roasty. So it's an organization that's specific just to western Iowa. So it's not all Iowa, and, uh, they didn't put together, because John Thomas, he was the director for a long time. He put together a manual for these types of structures. And, uh, I think he put in some information, a map together, that this area has more grade control and erosion preventing structures than anywhere else in the world.
Good.
Predicted. Very unique here.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Twenty-five. We have a general discussion, Jake.
Um, I'll be bringing it to you guys soon. Um, each year we have to do updates as the Title VI coordinator.
Yes.
I believe when the board chair changes, and I'm just re-stating that I have, if you like, to, uh, talk to whatever you want to say. Coordinator for Title VI. Title VI is, uh, making sure we're in compliance when it comes to nondiscriminately, things like that, um, to receive federal aid, including. Right. And, um, other than that, budgets due next week, so that's kind of my main focus. Rest of this week and next week is keeping our budget together. Part of our budget is also putting together our fireier constructions, so getting that together. Pick out some projects that we don't need.
Thank you. Okay. Working on that.
You guys have any comments or? I had somebody calling. With something he wants us to do, something he wants us to look at. Do you remember when Reed Allen came in? Would have been a couple of years ago, had that petition to, uh, at least pave a portion of two hundred fiftieth street? I want to know exactly how you felt, Jake, um, about not only the safety of two hundred fiftieth street. There's been a lot of houses that have popped up there uh, before twenty twenty-one, and there's been even more now. Um, and Reed reached out to me, now that we have a new board, and he wants to know the exact procedure of how they would be able to get something like that done. I said, one hundred percent, you should get a petition, and you should bring it in here, and they should talk to us, but he wanted to know how that would look. I said, one hundred percent, you should get a petition, and you should bring it in here, and they should talk to us, but he wanted to know how that would look. Um, and, um, you know, what the cost would be for the homeowners themselves.
Yeah.
Um, as well as the county, what we would, what we would do. So I'm gonna give you a call this afternoon, just so you know. And then I'm gonna give you his phone number so you can talk to him personally.
What's his full name?
Reed Allen. Which is for supervision.
I know I've talked to him in the past.
R E E D.
Yes.
I believe I got a write-up from years ago. They requested.
He didn't accept it.
And then also paving, and, uh, kind of our process of that is if they petition for it, then I put together a cost estimate. And then I believe the board has elected that they would put up a hundred percent of the cost, and then we would facilitate the project.
The homeowners. And I believe when it gets to that point, you usually get shut down because
there's different ways to, to split it out as far as who would pay what, as far as in front of the road. And so a lot of times the farmers have, if they want this section paved, and the farmer owns this much, and he's like, well, I really don't care if it's paved or not. I don't want higher taxes. And they say, no. Then these other people usually don't want to pay their portion.
Yep.
And so a lot of times it does stop there. We can certainly go down that road and see.
Uh, he said also that one of his neighbors, and, and I'm not up to date when it comes to Iowa call, when it comes to, uh, this matter specifically, but one of his neighbors has been looking at, um, if there's some sort of mandate that says we have to pave a road if a certain amount of people live on it, certain population density. Is there anything off the top of your head that that is? She hasn't sent me the info yet, but, um, when I get that, I'll make sure I send it to you too.
No, there is. You can look at some of Iowa DOT, uh, gravel maintenance guide. And it will give a recommendation.
A certain number.
Want to, after so many vehicles per day, consider paving the road, uh, but there's no mandate for that.
Okay.
Jack, that'd be a good question to keep in mind when we go to a new offer for train.
Absolutely.
Uh, this is where, this is where a lot of things start. And our, our, Isaac engineer personnel will be there to listen.
Yeah, he has a, we have a session where the, we have an engineer speak, don't we?
I think so, yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We need to run through it. Better than you can.
One of the biggest things people come to me, want the road paved, and we always get it, and it's part of the county, and I agree, yeah, we've paved every single road. It just comes down to money.
It's cost.
A lot of our money goes to maintaining the road system we have.
Got to say that.
It is.
Yep. So that's always.
I have a two twenty from SealCo to SealCo.
Yeah, that one, um, I don't think we have it in this next year from SealCo, but whenever we do, we redo that. I'm just gonna block it all the way through it, so. It is in the future. Two twenty is a weird road that has SealCo from both ends and a gravel between. I remember there's about a mile or two ago, that follow-up through there. That's where I thought.
I thought we covered some of that issue that we did.
I don't think we did this year. I know we discussed it, Richard, but I don't think we did.
We tend to. Edition.
Okay.
Um, any additional? SealCo is, uh, it's expensive to maintain, and so it's a good option for certain roads. Um, but they also deteriorate a lot faster, so we've kind of gotten in the past where we don't want to add any more to our system. But on some cases such as this, I think it is best bet, and it makes more sense just to connect the roads, pull through.
Jake? Would you get a call from a pulse back this week?
What was his issue? It's kind of sounds familiar.
Widening two hundred fifty, maybe?
Oh, yeah, you want to get on the agenda.
Yeah, did he talk to you?
I talked to him briefly. Yeah.
Right, just want to make sure you're working for us.
Yeah.
Anything else you have, sir?
Yeah, I don't know what I have.
You're gonna be in your office this, uh, afternoon.
Yeah.
Might stop down there.
Yeah, that'll be good. Show you around and discuss whatever you like.
Perfect.
All right.
Appreciate it, Jake.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is our sheriff, and he said he had a meeting, so he would not be able to sneak in here, he didn't think. Do you have the letters?
Um, I don't have the letter, but I think I'll grab it, I bet.
You want me to go chase Steve?
Yeah, you want to. This would be for.
And then he give you the. For the police officer.
Oh, I thought that.
Perfect. Appreciate it. Iowa, yeah, I'll stop down Friday after lunch or something.
Okay. Yeah, just shoot me. If I get work on stuff, I work very.
Oh, yeah.
All right, good to see you. Thank you.
I'll see if, I'll see if, uh, they drop one of them off.
I'm gonna check that quickly, just like Steve ordered.
Steve was going downstairs, this paper's could be in.
So with Greg, are we gonna table that till Tuesday?
Yeah, if we could do it today, could you? Yes, we're still.
I think the letter of resignation is going, the person that's heading it down here is.
Skip ahead quick here to number eight. Mr. Cool, Head of Buildings and Ground Supervisor, replacement for fire alarm and channel of the courthouse.
Yeah. What I just handed you guys is a rough estimate on what it would cost to have that done. Uh, we've had some sensors go out in the air handlers, and through talking to our, uh, Johnson Control rep, what we have is antiquated. And trying to find parts is next to impossible. So he figures that in the next five years, we need to take a look at replacing the whole system. So that's what this number here is, one ninety to two thirty. Um, just so we have that in front of us moving forward.
Okay, it's budget season, so we'll have to, um, keep honest with you, like, as you make your budget.
Yeah, he thinks that we might be good for maybe five years. We could be good for five weeks, five months.
Be nice to plan for it.
Yeah, so that's what this is. Just getting us aware of what's out there and what it's gonna cost to get things fixed.
Bring it up again when you bring your budget.
Okay, that's it.
All right, folks, what, what just consists of our air handling system is all supposed to be individually written.
Well, it's not the air handling system, it's the alarms for the air handler system, the alarms in the building, uh, the lights and everything. Johnson Control says that, that, um, what we have right now is not up to ADA, ADA code. Okay? Um, don't have to do anything until we do a replacement, from what I understand. Okay, I'm just parodying that. Um, that's where this big number comes in, because they have to go in and, and go through the entire building. The flashing lights, alarms, have a voice thing for, for people that, that can't see or visually impaired, that sort of stuff. So it's going from the ground up.
It still goes back to, it can be cold in here, and you walk across the hall and.
Oh, yeah. Or the courtroom.
We can't, we can't equalize this building for some reason, for now.
No. Anyway, that's just some forecast for you guys.
I'd like to. Aye, thank you.
Yep.
Where is Alexis last been?
Uh, Kittenson, it's serving ice.
You have both of those in? You have both letters?
I have one for Alexis, and they're working on the second one.
So we have two?
Well, I have one for the.
One resigning and one taking the base.
The shop service.
Say, yeah. Um, is Alexis the one that lives in kind of near trainer?
Um. Somewhere, she lives over east somewhere. I don't know where.
She the one that's moving on to?
Yeah, Puck and yours, troopers.
That's like trooper, that's right.
Did that for me real quick, sorry.
No, that's, you're good, you're good.
We got the, uh, what was it? Safety meeting on Tuesday, seven AM, chair or something? Am I correct that that, Bonnie, is that next Tuesday? I have a question. Feel like Greg brought it up, that you offered to bring in doughnuts.
All right, you have a safety meeting at seven AM on Tuesday at the annex, so it must just be for his office.
Okay, so I do have a letter for the detention officer.
Okay.
Crimson Ruttenberg.
Crimson Ruttenberg.
Sexually completed, informationary period, per gain contactor salary will go to forty-six thousand seven forty-three, effective January seventh.
Six thousand seven forty-three.
Forty-six.
The name again?
Crimson.
Crimson?
Yeah, Ruttenberg, R U T T E N B U R G.
I would make a motion to approve Crimson Ruttenberg per union contract. So he raises forty-six thousand seven forty-three.
Second that. We have a motion and a second to approve the detention officer raised per union contract, Crimson Ruttenberg, to forty-six, seven forty-three. Is there any discussion? Hearing that all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries.
On the other one, this would be for Alexis Kittenson, K I T T E L S O N. And her last payment will be January twenty-fifth of twenty-twenty-five.
There's no payback to she goes on that, correct?
Um.
I knew we brought her out with the city.
I, there might be.
Okay.
I don't know for sure. I know we, we discussed it, but I can't remember if we decided.
But we have to, we wanted because back then, I think she had the same city.
City.
We should be on equal state.
But if there is, we will be in contact. I'll let you guys settle that for help, for sure.
Okay, someone want to approve the resignation of Alexis Kittenson?
I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Alexis Kittenson.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resignation of Alexis Kittenson. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing that all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Good. Any open discussion, guys?
I have none.
Not either.
As for the community awareness, I've talked to a few people about this, but, um, very, very grateful for the support that everyone showed me. Um, luckily, I'm a college student and I take my classes online, so, uh, and it's at my own pace. I don't have to be anywhere. So I'm planning on Mondays and Thursdays from twelve to five o'clock, every day I will be here in the boardroom. Uh, feel free to let people know. They can come in anytime if they want to discuss anything. It won't be an opinion of the Board of Supervisors. It will just be an opinion of myself. So if they have any complaints, comments, questions, concerns, make sure that people know that they can come in Mondays and Thursdays from twelve to five and meet with me here in this room.
Someone want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn at nine fifty-six.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn at nine fifty-six. Any discussion? Hearing that all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
I'm gonna order a digital clock.
Thank you, Amber. I'm ordering a digital clock.
That's a great idea, Richard. Think I'll do that.